Welcome to the December twentieth regular county commissioner meeting, last one for two thousand and twenty-two. You'll notice we have a different background and this will be maybe the background for a few months with the exception of a meeting or two. The commission room is being renovated so that we can make it a little bit use for usable for for commission meetings and other meetings. So I'd like to call the meeting to order Commissioner Iber.
Here.
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Mr. Gosar is also here. Would you stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance, please? Thank you. Item three, a public hearing. We don't have a public hearing tonight. Item four, comments from the public. Take the public comments here in person and then we'll go online. Would anybody like to make a public comment here?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Good evening commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Seth. Thank you.
As the county emergency management coordinator, I recommend closing government offices and all non-essential facilities on the interstate due to the impending warm weather. The highest war cactus at twenty below with wind chills ranging from forty to seventy below. Many of my counterparts and surrounding locations are exposed to close their offices as well. Unofficially, my contact at the National Weather Service, Cheyenne, supports my recommendation. In the meantime, we have local emergency sheltering and warming centers on standby. Life safety is my utmost priority and any proper precautions are not taken, it can hold the whole serious. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Appreciate it. Anybody else? How about online? Does everybody have the public? Raise your hand.
Yes.
Right. I've got.
Can you hear me?
Got it loud and clear. Can you hear us?
Yes. All right. Hi, good evening. My name is Brian Kerr and I'm a lawyer admitted in Wyoming from New York. I am sorry I cannot be there in person tonight as I am back in New York. Three months ago, I attended an Albany County Commissioners' meeting in person and introduced myself to the commissioners and the community. However, I am not here to talk about myself tonight. I am here tonight to talk about Chairman Gosar and Commissioner Richardson. First, I want to congratulate Chairman Gosar on his reelection as I look forward to his continued service to the community. Chairman Gosar is an amazing person to have as a public official. Next, I want to thank Commissioner Richardson for his dedicated service to the community. When I was in Wyoming in September, Commissioner Richardson and I met and talked for hours about Wyoming and Albany County in particular. Commissioner Richardson even gave a tour of part of the community. Before the conversation, I believed I knew so much about Wyoming. However, after the conversation, I believed I did not know much of anything about Wyoming as Commissioner Richardson is so knowledgeable while there is so much to learn about Wyoming. The trip to Wyoming in September was the best experience of my life so far. Commissioner Richardson was part of it. What I was most impressed about Commissioner Richardson is his technical knowledge regarding public utility projects. This knowledge is important to have as a public official, especially one who works with public utility projects. I hope Commissioner Richardson stays involved as Commissioner Richardson is an amazing person to have as a public official and has so much to offer to the community. I hope I will be back in Wyoming again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, and almost didn't recognize you with with the beer. So thank you for joining us again tonight. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioners, I entertain a motion to close the public comment.
I move that we close the public comment.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is close, same sign. That motion carries. Item five, disposers to Commissioner Iber. Mr. Richardson.
I have none.
And I have done also. Item six, consideration of changes on the agenda. Jennifer, thank you.
Chairman Gosar and Commissioners, I would like to request that we add an agenda item to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash zero two-one, which is a resolution declaring a temporary freeze or moratorium on any new subdivision permit applications and/or zoning district amendment applications within the aquifer protection overlay zone. That resolution was certified by the Planning and Zoning Commission on December fourteenth. And also then if you do choose to approve it, set a special meeting on January the ninth at a time to be determined by this board and then direct the clerk to add for justice.
Okay. Thank you. Any to your reason for the ninth just is that?
We have to have at least fourteen days from the date of publication and usually when we have our Tuesday meetings, as soon as we can publish is Saturday.
Okay.
So it can be after the ninth.
Fourteen A, we'll make that fourteen A and then fourteen B. Commissioners, can we put a discussion and then an action item for both Steph Baker has to do for the county buildings except for essential workers for Thursday, excuse me, that would be fourteen B. Any other changes? Thank you. Item seven, approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner, your pleasure. Anything or approve the consent agenda as it's presented?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moving second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Same sign, please. She carries. Now onto the regular agenda. Item eight, request financial support for Laramie High School two thousand and twenty-three project graduation in the amount of one thousand dollars. Could you just introduce yourself at the lecture because we don't have a visual on it. Thank you.
My name is Julia. I want to share some financials. This year, my other team chairs won't be able to come this evening. Um, we are planning the thirty-ninth project graduation event, which is crazy. There's probably people in this room, like myself, who actually attended this of the Laramie High School graduates. Project graduation is a drug and alcohol free event for all Albany County graduates. So it's open to widening the school schools, Laramie High School. All graduates are invited. It is completely run off of donations. We are finding that the city, we are, people are very generous in supporting this event. We are finding this year that donations aren't as much as they have been in the past. The businesses are are feeling if they want to give, but they didn't get as much as they think they could have passed. So we are asking for financial support of a thousand dollars for this event, which will be held the night of graduation on Friday, May sixth, I think is correct. So can we just ask for your support in this drug and alcohol free event for all Albany County graduates?
That includes homeschool.
Yep, it does. Yep. All all graduates are invited to.
Any other questions? Further questions? Anybody in the public have question? And I entertain a motion for item eight, please.
I move that we approve this one thousand dollars support for the Laramie High School project graduation.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is close, same sign, please. That motion carries. Thank you, Ashley. You too. Item nine, present for approval, utility license for carbon power light on County Road number forty-five, Lake Hattie Road. Rob, good evening.
Good evening. Commissioners, this is for higher access, these low cost, they can't go. Residents, you build costs, this is going to be an overhead.
Commissioners, any questions for Rob? Not identity motion Friday night.
I move that we approve item nine as presented.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing done all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is close, same sign, please. That motion carries. Item ten, ratify two thousand and twenty-three volunteer fire assistant grant application in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing parts and equipment for Albany County volunteer firefighters. Chad, good evening. Thank you.
Commissioner, this is a small grant. This grant comes up annually and reutilizing it this year to just acquire some basic personal protective equipment, pants, shirts, stands. The matching funds from our end is forty-five hundred, seven dollars and ninety-five cents. That'll come from the existing truck fund, so hopefully not very expensive. So with that said, I'd like to pre-throw it to Commissioner Richardson. Your your support to my programs.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion for item number ten, please.
I move that we ratify item ten as presented.
They're second.
Second.
In second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is close, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it. Item eleven, present for approval, quote from CWG for the purpose of ten Dell workstations via the state of Wyoming National IPA Technologies Contract in the amount not to exceed thirty-one thousand, eighteen dollars and fifty cents. Adam, is this one yours? I'm taking it.
Correct, sir.
The floor is yours.
Before you today is a quote for ten in-car workstations for the sheriff's office. This was not a project that was budgeted prior into the IT budget, looking to pull it from allocated sheriff funds that he had established, purchasing through what is now, it was previously called the IP, was it IPS or IPA? Technology contract to state Wyoming is a part of, which is now rolled over into Omni Partnership of which we've purchased from before. Is there any questions I can answer in regard in regards to the technology?
Face out of any questions, Commissioners. Are these in car? Laptops or those desktops? Are these not as mobile as something like that, Adam?
They're, I call them workstations, but they are technically ultra rugged laptops.
Thank you. There are no more questions. I entertain a motion for item eleven, please. Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all is in favor, signify by saying hi, please. Hi, all is opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Adam. I appreciate it. Item twelve, ratify letter to Nancy Bartholomew, Laramie City Clerk to allow Snowy Range Resorts, Inc., doing business Albany Lodge to apply for a catering permit for Christmas party located at the Railroad Depot at six hundred South First Street on December sixteen, two thousand and twenty-two from five P M to ten P M. Jackie, that says you have it.
Mr. Chairman, the city of Laramie approved the catering permit for Snowy Range Resorts, Inc., doing business Albany Lodge at their meeting on December thirteenth. I am asking that the Board of County Commissioners just ratify the letter that was sent to Nancy Bartholomew allowing the Albany Lodge to use their county liquor license in the city.
And this party has already taken place.
This actual party was the county Christmas party last Friday.
I move that we got all the letters.
Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all is in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is close, same sign, please. That motion carries. Thank you, Nisa, for setting that up. I really appreciate it. Great, great event. Item thirteen, UW extension Albany County four-H update. Mary Louise Woods, thank you.
Okay, the main update I have, Commissioners and Chairman Gosar, is that I will be leaving Albany County at the end of January. I am transferring, I'm not leaving at extension, I'm transferring to Park County to do the four-H program there. Brian, Tabby, or any other coordinator will become the county coordinator, uh, January twenty-seventh. And so I just wanted to reintroduce you. You guys know Brian, but he'll be the liaison. As far as the timeline for filling this position, they assure me that they will advertise soon as possible. So hopefully by the end of January, they will advertise the position. There was not an internal transfer, anybody interested, so it will go out to the nation high search. So I wanted to, I know that you already knew, but I wanted to let you guys know from me that I am leaving. It has not been an easy decision, but Powell is where I grew up and so I have opportunity to go.
Oh, what a game for Park County and lost for Albany County.
You guys will be fine.
I certainly really appreciate. How long?
So I've been there fifteen years. Yeah, we've lived in Albany County for six years. But I went on the extension.
Well, thank you for everything, Mary Louise. Really appreciate it. All the work.
Well, I told Brian, I'm not deserting him, so. I'm just a homecoming until they have somebody here and also I'll play. I know the people.
Yeah, and the last day is indeed the last day of January will be your last day here.
So that'll be my technically last day will be January thirty-one, yes, but I start that in February first, so my last day will probably be the twenty-seventh. If I can get.
Yeah. Commissioners.
We don't.
Right.
Well, having been born and raised in Powell myself, I know it's not a bad place to return to and hopefully when I'm up visiting running to you or contact you.
Please do. Yeah. After I put it.
That's tough.
We just wanted to let you know.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks, Brian, for stepping into those big shoes. Item fourteen A is the or the two thousand and twenty-two zero two-one resolution declaring a temporary freeze moratorium. Jennifer, please.
Commissioner, so you have a red line copy and a clean copy in front of you. The red line copy without the red lines is what came from planning and zoning. And the red lines are in general because in on page three in section two, they wanted it to be that the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County hereby declare that a temporary freeze slash moratorium for up to a hundred and twenty days should be placed on any new subdivision permit applications and or zoning district amendment applications regarding property situated in whole or in part within the Albany or within the aquifer protection overlay zone and located in the unincorporated area of Albany County. And they had that language about it being the new subdivision permits, so I went through and added new in the header and the footer and in an item on page two in one of the warehouses. And then in section three of the resolution itself, initially, we had, they had had the date in there as January third because that's exactly fourteen days after this meeting. But after Matt and I talked, we believe that it has to be advertised for fourteen days before the meeting at least at a minimum of fourteen days, so we would need to push it to at least January ninth. So that's the red line in section three. My understanding is this resolution was passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of three to two. There was discussion at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This resolution only encompasses the area within our current APOZ. It does not look at any area that may be expanded under the new Casper Aquifer Protection Plan because we don't have that definition yet and it's changing potentially from what they had initially thought. There have been some changes is my understanding. So Planning and Zoning was aware that it's only on the existing APOZ and that that's the information that I have for you. Do you need me to read this to you aloud? Since it's not part of your packet?
I don't know that we did read aloud. But so can we have it any day after the ninth? And so can we put it into the second meeting in January the seventeenth? Or is that not?
That should be fine. That should be fine. We can do it on the seventeenth and then just have it as a regular. It will, there will be a public hearing on that day because so what we're required to do is you can implement this tonight and then we have to have that public hearing on it and after the public hearing and a consideration at that meeting, then you can make the decision whether or not to continue the moratorium after that point in time.
Okay.
That would be my preference. I'm going to be out of contention. That's why. Commissioner Gosar.
You don't want to call in while you're traveling, doing some things? I can't imagine. No, I think that's fine. So long as that only puts us another six days out. So it's not, if we were going another thirty days out, I would be concerned, but six days.
Commissioners, any questions for Jennifer? Okay. See no more questions under the option for item fourteen A.
I move that we approve the resolution twenty-two dash two-one, resolution declaring a temporary freeze slash moratorium on any new subdivision permit application and or zoning district application with the section of the name. And set a special meeting for January seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three and direct the court to that.
Sir, second. Second. It's been moved in second and is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing done all is in favor, signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi, all is opposed, same sign, please.
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jennifer. Item fourteen B is a follow-up to Steph Baker's recommendation to close offices on Thursday, December twenty-second. Except for essential services, Commissioners, any any thoughts, any concerns? Your pleasure.
Are we closed? Are they closed anyway on Friday?
We're closed Friday and Monday.
I agree. I think we should close it and the reason is, in my experience, in that kind of cold, when the high is twenty below, it's just stupid. It's just stupid happens. Well, you know, things break, people break, everything breaks. And and it's really hard to get anywhere or do anything. Productivity is challenging and and sometimes people get dissuaded from going somewhere and saves their lives. So we should renew their registrations tomorrow. Instead of on Thursday. My operation. My own personal one. It's no way.
I have a lot of position to do.
Jennifer, you know, I was kind of hoping Steph would stay, but how did they alert people to that? That the county is closing when maybe people are expecting us to be open on Thursday? What is the process? Just so people will know. Jackie?
I was going to say Jackie's party better run for that. I was thinking, I just wanted to clarify. For essential services, are you only talking about like Sheriff's Department and those kinds of things? Or do you want minimum staffing in attorney's office and the clerk's office and the treasurer's office?
To me, I think that that's a decision that elected officials get to make based on their role in statute and in the community. I don't know that. I mean, if we're giving the the departments that are supervised by the commissions, by the commissioners, we could tell them to be closed, but I think that the other is up to the discretion of the elected officials, but to me, you know, law enforcement and I don't know, can attorneys tell a commute on a on a Thursday?
Depends upon what your court here. I'm sorry about that. I just, the reason I was asking is because you have control over buildings, so if we have some consensus either amongst the elected, so when we put out an ad that says either, you know, the county offices with the accession of District Court and Circuit Court are closed in the courthouse or if we want to say that there's minimum staffing levels. Because one is that the public can come in and still do those services that they if they need to and the other is that there's some.
Jackie, you ever thought about it as a elected official here?
Just talking about services that are provided in order for titles to be issued and registrations to be issued. Also, we would have to work together with the treasurer's office so that it would be convenient for the public. And so I think it raises a question, either it's all or none to allow for either the courthouse to be open or or to be closed. Certainly, we can always, I would put a media release out, we would put it on the county website. We would advertise it via the radio and basically put notices on the door tomorrow if the courthouse should be closed on Thursday.
Tracy, how about you, please? You're online.
Good evening, guys. Sorry. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I don't have much of a voice right now. But I guess I don't know that I like the employees having to come out in the freezing cold. It's kind of dangerous, but I will. It's it's hard when the public needs to still do their business because we're already have shortened hours excuse me, for all the holidays. So with property taxes also being due on December thirty-first, it's kind of short notice where, you know, how many closures already. I do know the university is closing on Thursday, though. Or what? Or possibly, I guess my husband said.
Thank you, Tracy. So Jennifer, I've just got a question about the court schedule. If we close the building, that will impact the court, will it?
We would just post notices on the door that say county services are closed, but the circuit court and district court are still open unless something comes from the state prior to that that it needs to close.
Does anybody have any thoughts? Change your mind at all? Ever? Are you thinking we should just close it except for the essential services and leave the building open for the courtrooms if they want it? Or leave it to the elected officials inside?
I don't, you know, it's the end of the year and the end of the, right? And there's all kinds of deadlines for people. Man. It's hard to believe it would be a busy day. I mean, at the same time that all those deadlines exist, it's hard to believe they were. Just because.
I know that our district court judge is out Thursday and Friday. There may be some virtual hearings, but I don't believe that there are any currently scheduled hearings in the courtroom and I'm not certain about circuit court.
I guess the whole point to Mr. Stevens' point is to keep our employees safe and all, and I think that should be extended to the public. I guess the whole point, Stephanie's point is to keep our employees safe and all, and I think that should be extended to the public. Granted, there are deadlines, but the public already was aware that this place wasn't going to be open on Friday. And another day, they do have tomorrow, if we get something on the day to wait quickly, you know, to let them know that. I think we'll just all
Okay, Peter. Terry, you have a thought?
Terry Johnson, I've seen my experience that in a storm, after a storm, because I've been here shoveling the sidewalks, Eber's been here shoveling the sidewalks, know when it comes. You might have one or two people try and get into the courthouse. And unless the New York school is supposed to be this week. So I say, shut it.
Yeah. Yeah, the question is really how many people are up against the government? Like well, maybe you get saved by your car not starting when you try to leave your house.
Well, there's, there's actually
He likes super big, very far.
So I, yeah, I think
Okay, I didn't take a motion to do whatever we're gonna do.
I move out of Jake and uh, Stephanie's best recommendation opposing county buildings to all employees.
On Thursday?
On Thursday, December twenty-second.
There's a second?
Yeah, I think, but I think the sheriff's department will still, yeah, second.
And so press section.
Section.
Yep.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none halls in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is supposed to have sign. That motion carries. Um, couple of items that aren't on your uh, agenda, um, I wanted to thank um, welcome um, a person who's coming onto the commission, I'd like to welcome Terry, a back to commission in January. Um, and I'd like to say thank you to Jennifer Graham, um, who's out leaving as the coroner. Um, Albany County spent eight years doing that work, all weather, all times of day and night. Um, and really, probably not paid anywhere near what that job is worth, so I'd like to thank her for her service on that. Um, I'd also like to thank uh, Jackie uh, for forty-three years of, of service here at the county. Um, I'm so grateful uh, for the work, uh, just personally and then also as a citizen that you've done for, for forty-three years. Uh, what a run, um, not many people stayed at a place for forty-three years, it's remarkable and just remind people that um, December twenty-eighth at the fairgrounds, two to four P M, uh, would be Jackie's going away party. Um, and um, um, we'll certainly attend if I'm still on the side of the grass, um, on the twenty-eighth. Um, and so thank Jackie, is there anything you'd like to share? You don't have to, if you don't want to. I'd love to hear from you.
I just want to acknowledge what an honor it's been to serve. Um, my family told me last night, Mom, don't cry. And so, um, yeah, do they know, um, what a humbling experience. Providing public service as you all do is a reward in itself and I'm going to miss my staff who really are the ones that do the hard work in the office. Um, it's been an honor to serve my colleagues. Um, Albany County is a great place to be and a great place to work. And um, I will miss all of you. But know that I'm just a phone call away. If there's ever a time that I can provide any service um, on behalf of uh, the county, I will continue to uh, serve uh, with the appointments that have been given to me on the airport board. I still have a year of you still would like me to serve there and um thank you, thank you to the taxpayers, to the people that I've had the honor to serve. I really appreciate it.
Well, well, thank you so much Jackie. Yeah, look forward to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, Jackie, I just wanted to say that I've, I feel so fortunate to have had uh, two years working with you and and literally sitting next to you in our county commission meetings downstairs. Um, I felt very lucky to have you on board and um, wish you just the best. I hope you have all sorts of adventures um, set up and, and planned for you, but I'll look forward to running into you in the community as I have in the past and all, and thank you for all those incredible number of years and all the good work you've done. We're all the better for it.
Jackie, I love you, you're the real deal. Those are my compliments.
Well, Jackie will miss you, um, and I certainly will miss you, uh, four years of, of help of trying to learn this position. Most of it came from you, um, and I really do appreciate that. We almost got that commission room done in time, you got your part done. Uh, we just couldn't get it uh, built, uh, but you have to come back and see it with us. Um, and so thank you, uh, I really do appreciate it. Um, and then finally, uh, we're losing a commissioner here, um, who's been with the commission for eight years and so uh uh, there's never been too many people that like their community and love those people in the community more than, than Commissioner Richardson. Uh, thank you for your generosity, uh, for your willingness to help in a moment's notice. Um, as a nonprofit director, I know what you do, that many people don't do in the community and I'm so grateful uh, for that. Um, it's kind of Christmas here today for you, so we have a plaque from uh, uh, mechanic commissioner association.
Oh, that's cool.
And then also another plaque and a gavel from Ray Go.
You know, I've handed these out, I guess you gotta get one too, so.
And then here in the county, uh, we hope we did this right and hopefully this will
Now, this is funny.
So we got the new logo onto the jacket and hopefully that'll fit.
Open that sucker will, I'm trying it on right here, on camera, this would be, this would be great if it does.
In the meantime, Eber, I want to say that uh, as I'm finding out, being the county commissioner is not an easy job, as you well know and have done along the way, you make some good decisions and you make some not so good decisions. You hope that the good decisions outnumber not so good and you try to learn from each uh, decision made. It's important to acknowledge the amount of year you gave to this commission. Eight years is a long time. I'm, I'm just two years in, I can't imagine another six right now, but um, I think it's important to acknowledge the service that you have, I have given and um I hope that uh, you do some good with the extra time you have now, uh, not attending these meetings and other commissioner obligations. I wish you the best, not only in the new year, but the many years to come, Eber. Thank you for your service and thank you for um, helping me learn along the way in the last two years. You've been a good go-to for me. Thank you.
You're welcome, yeah, you're welcome.
Well, Eber, thanks so much. Um, you know, I think that uh, um when you're able to be um, civil about disagreements and then walk away going, wow, we might just disagree, but I know that person's interest is Albany County and I know it's the citizens of Albany County. You can't ask much more as a citizen uh, for an elected official. Um, I, I know there's been times where um, you wish uh, you wouldn't have been a elected official uh, and that some people took some shots that were unfair and uh, that wasn't uh, all right, but I think you handled it fairly well and, and you did the work um, uh, of trying to help the community and so thank you so much, I appreciate it.
The best kind of elected official is one who does a lot of people. And that's me. I was asked to, I figured it was my duty and so I, I I love all of you very much.
Well, um, for Jennifer, for Jackie, uh, for Eber, if you'd help join me with a round of applause, I would appreciate it. Well, uh, thank you all, move to the final two items, item fourteen, approved payroll and vouchers for December twenty twenty-two, I entertain a motion.
Take that for the last
Sure. I move that we approve payroll and vouchers for December of twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moving seconded, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing, none halls in favor, signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all is supposed to have sign. That motion carries. And item fifteen, seeing no more business before the county commission on December twentieth of twenty twenty-two. Um, moved to the meeting, thank you all for joining us, uh, stay warm and safe this week and uh we're looking to, to celebrate you too, Mary Louise, here in the middle of January, get something to say thank you about again. Thank you so much. Good night.